Well, good morning. Welcome to the Monday meeting of the B O C C, our business meeting. Should I just go right into it, Jessica? I'm seeing in dark letters here, do we have an exec session today?
We do, yes, for performance of an employee.
Good morning, Jessica Warren, Human Resources. First item I have on my list today is a request from Public Works. One of their employees up at the landfill has resigned. He's only been here a couple of months and he got another job that he was more interested in. They'd like to request to fill his position.
Just to refill it?
Yes.
Looks good, yeah.
And then another request to fill facilities maintenance has an opening for a maintenance mechanic. Just refilling a position the employee left a couple of weeks ago.
Good.
Okay. And then our Humana 2024 renewal, this is for our left one retirees came in for 2024. The 2023 rate was two ninety-six forty-eight and the 2024 rate for renewal is three eleven thirty. So it's about a five percent increase, which-
Per employee per month?
Per employee per month and there's, I believe there's maybe fourteen now left one retirees. So that fairly decent renewal. Not as good as we've had in the past with the Humana group, but still a good renewal. So I'll be placing that on the consent agenda for next week.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Katrina has done a good job of taking care of both ends also, so-
Yes.
Appreciate that.
I've seen rate increases a lot worse, so.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Yeah, I think we, we made a good decision going with Humana a few years ago. It's been good renewals for us and they're really helpful when dealing with the retirees and answering those questions, so. Do you have any other questions about that?
In, in addition to that, we have the dental plan also.
Yeah, the dental, we, that was on the consent agenda a few months ago. That was renewed. I think that was a fairly small increase for the dental. So we have dental through Delta Dental for them and then the Humana.
And glasses are with Humana?
Yes, I believe so.
Thank you.
And all the parameters stayed the same?
Um, there's a few enhancements. He highlighted a couple of them, so there's continuous glucose monitoring, toothbrush and digital fitness program discounts that were added, but everything stays the same.
They didn't change deductibles or any of those type of things? Yeah, okay.
You'll see that next week. That's all I have on my list. I'm, our office is currently in the depths of negotiating with three of our- our office is currently in the depths of negotiating with three of our groups with another one starting up soon and then the rest coming in the fall and then we're looking to hire our fourth person hopefully pretty quickly so we can get the help back in the office, so.
And we will handle this executive session after the others. You're good with that? Okay.
Works. Anything else for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Budget.
Good morning, Kathy Fund Baxter, Finance Manager. Last week I attended the Washington Risk Pool Meeting on behalf of the county and they voted on several increases in our different programs and primarily because some of the insurance have gone has gone up, but also because the risk pool fund balance or balance that they're holding funding adequacy is has declined because of some claims in the last couple of years, and so they're trying to get it back up. Last year they had voted to increase five million in the fund balance. And so just a snapshot is that on the liability program our rate is is scheduled to go up. We were paying to the liability program about one point two million. It's going to go up to about one point six million. Yeah, so significant increase. I had built that a budget increase already in to what I was forecasting for twenty four and twenty five when I built the program where you build all the departments, so as a service center. So the good news is I had I had been in the right range. I thought it was high, but so that's where it's at. Our rate on the liability program is based upon our number of hours, workers' hours, and so we saw they saw an increase for us of eight percent. And it's all over the board. Some counties went down ten percent and some went up as much as twenty eight percent. So we're in right in the middle.
All based on workers' hours?
Workers' hours, and what they're saying is some of the counties that I talked to, they're bring, you know, they brought back more of their workers. They've also you know, had some additional positions added to their budgets in the last year. But ours is pretty staying pretty stable. We're we're probably at eight percent. There's two that were like click clat. Click.
Click.
Clicked a cut. Had a twenty nine percent in hours and this one I'm not going to get right either. Oh, can not, oh, can no gun. They had an increase of twenty eight percent, but both of those are very small counties and so anyway, and Yakima had an increase of eleven percent and then we're next been nine percent and we're at eight percent. So we're right there in the top increases in number of hours. So that also affected our our increase as well.
So I I think I need some handholding. These are if we collectively take all the employee hours, this is the percentage increase we're saying.
Yes.
And that is used.
That's used in figuring out our liability, our contribution, our portion of the contribution. And then in addition to that, they're also increasing the bake base contribution for everyone. So it's like a factor of several different factors.
But I'm interested in how they do the pooling, so it's it's all the workers' hours and everybody who's in the pool. And that is the per capita or per hour equivalent.
Yes, yes.
And so you work more hours, you pay more insurance.
Yes, yes. And they're and they have they they take it all back to a rate per hour. There is one schedule that they did that way to show you a rate per hour.
Yeah, that seems a little strange to me. There is no other modifier, so if I work very carefully and I work a lot, I'm penalized to the person who works fewer hours, but is very loose about safety, say.
Yeah.
Okay, so tha- and that's the entire way they do the pooling.
Yes, they have they have hours, a base rate, a deductible factor and a modification factor.
Industrial factor, could you talk about that?
Which one, the?
The industrial factor you said?
Uh, no, deductible.
Oh, deductible, sorry.
Yeah, so for example, not everyone's deductible is the same in the pool. Our deductible is one hundred thousand.
That's our choice, right?
That's our choice, yes. There are some counties that have like a ten thousand dollar deductible. Some have a twenty five thousand dollar deductible. But the larger members looks like they all have a hundred thousand dollar deductible.
Is it nonlinear?
I don't I don't know. I'm all new to this, so.
So if we
Last week was my first introduction to everything.
So for us, the total fee is one point six.
Yes.
Okay, and if we increase the deductible to two hundred thousand.
I don't, I think we're at the max.
Well, we're at the max.
We are, we are at the max. One hundred thousand is the max.
Could you make an inquiry as to if we wanted to go up to two hundred thousand? I I would imagine there probably a number of counties that might be at that that situation with getting funded this the way they are if we haven't if we have an opportunity to save.
So from all of this discussion, we are
Oh, actu- actually, I think we can go up. I I misspoke. There there's actually Spokane is at five hundred thousand dollar deductible. And then you've got a couple of Thurston's is at two fifty. Yakima is five hundred thousand. And then Watacom, am I saying that right?
Watcom, yeah.
Is two hundred and fifty thousand.
How much is Watcom? How much is their their equivalent to our one point six million?
They're going to be two million.
I didn't think they were that big.
Watkins up in Bellingham area, right? Yeah. It's a lot of growth up in there.
There's a lot of what?
Lot of growth up in that area. I don't know the stats and how what their size is, but I know there's been a lot of growth there.
Those Canadians know a good deal when they find.
Yeah, so that's our liability program. And then we also just the other large one that we have is our property program. And on this one, we also have the ability to have different deductibles. We are currently at five thousand dollars deductible, which the majority of the pool members are at five thousand. There are a few that are at twenty five thousand, Spokane, Thurston and Yakima, and then Watacom is at fifty thousand deductible. Our assessment is going from four hundred and fifty five thousand to a little over six hundred thousand. All of the pool is based upon two factors on this one, your insured value, which our insured value went up sixteen percent and then a base rate. So and the range of what properties went up anywhere from nine percent base, I mean insured value to twenty six percent increase in insured value.
I would I would appreciate knowing the options that we might have for hiring.
Yeah, on this one, I thought our five thousand is fairly low and so if if anything on this one, I would recommend that we look at increasing the deductible, that's
I'd agree with Commissioner Weber and I I think, you know, even on the other one, if you if you say you bump it, we say, well, what's a two hundred and fifty thousand? Does it save us? If it were to save you a hundred and fifty, then it's probably worth taking the or taking a hard look at the that opportunity. So I don't know that it will, but
Yeah, it looks like on these deductible, the deductible factors as percentage, they range from like one percent, zero percent of the factor all the way up to five percent. And Spokane with one of the largest deductibles is the five percent, so.
Yeah, although it's a risky thing to do, do you do you have a number for what the payout ratio is for our county?
I can I can find out.
And maybe for all the other counties too.
Yeah, I I I'm a little surprised because usually insurance they have a loss ratio for 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 you, but it sounds like they kind of do that. They have a in in a little different way. They have, we want this much in reserves. If we don't have it, then everybody pitches in to make it that way.
Exactly. They did they did have, they did show the loss ratios and they employ an actuarial who helps forecast what's going to have, you know, what's based upon several factors, but forecast out. And one of the things on your liability program is that a lot of claims don't pay, like they just had one payout. It was from two thousand eighteen. So it takes a good three to five years before you ever get to the payout scenarios.
In that case, don't they kind of like you held in reserve for the for the budget? I would have thought that they would say for this year and then it's a modification when the actual amount occurs.
Yeah, so that's where that's where they're coming out when they look at their funding adequacy. And they've been ranging in the range of like twenty this is million, twenty million and they're tw- twenty million, then they bumped up to twenty five million in twenty twenty, twenty seven million in twenty twenty one, but because of payouts, they dipped down to twenty three million. And then when they budgeted for twenty three, they they budgeted to grow the fund five million dollars. And they they have their range of where they think we need to be for the future and we're still not there according to the actuarial.
And from what you see, you're happy with what they've done?
Yes, they they seem to. I was very pleased with the meeting and and how they approach things and how they they provided a lot of information.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate, I think we all appreciate you going over there, that's
And I'm going to send, I'm going to send all of y'all the packet of information that has some of these charts and things like that.
So as one of the newest members to go to that conference, did you get elected to any office that they
No, I did not.
So
I know, how do you avoid that trap?
So actually, I I wouldn't mind. I I'd like for us to explain to us more. I sort of like to do that maybe on a Wednesday where you can actually put the data up there and we can you can lead us through when you when you put stuff on my desk. I'm not sure if I'll ever find it, but that's that's my short.
I'll be happy happy to do that.
Done good.
Yeah, at the same time, I if it's okay, I'll
Where everything is on my desk.
Stuff.
I know where everything is on my desk.
Of course. It's underneath that.
You're the only one that knows where everything is on your desk.
Yeah, so in the workshop, if it's okay, I'll explain, you know, what we're being charged, how they arrived at that. And then also I'd like to further explain what we're doing in the budget for twenty four, twenty five and allocating that out as a enterprise activity.
Excellent, yeah, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
A bit of good news, that was not so good news, but the good news is I looked at the sales tax reports, they for the month of July of what they're dispersing. And so for this month, our dispersment of sales tax, a regular and optional is increased four point nine percent over July of twenty twenty two. So that's good. And then the mental health tax that is being dispersed, it's an eight percent increase over July of twenty twenty two. Don't know why those are different, but
So so the reason they're different is I if I understand it correctly, the the mental health tax or the baby health tax is countywide. The regular sales tax
Is just our county.
Is just in the unincorporated areas and fifteen percent of what's in the cities. So so it's understandable that it would be different.
It's a different rate. But but the good news is it's staying up.
And so just to be sure, I understood four point nine percent increase over last
July twenty twenty two dispersment distribution month. Yeah, so for example, this this in July, they're going to disperse one million, five thousand, seven hundred and sixty five dollars. And of course, July's dispersment is really for the month of
May is.
No, yeah, May, it's May. It's always two months behind. They disperse two months later.
Okay, now I'm confused. You don't have the July numbers.
Yes, I do. July twenty two.
That's the actual July twenty two number for that one month.
For that dispersment.
Oh, okay, which is over how many months?
It's it's for one month, but it's the dispersment that happens in July, which is really for sales tax reported in May.
Okay, so these are revenues from May. We get the money in July.
Yeah.
Right.
So the revenue for May last year is four point whatever less than what we're getting this time.
Right. See, the way I would look at that number and it just may be my myopia, I would look at that as the main number. So that's why I'm struggling here saying.
Okay, I'll I'll report it that way. It's it's your May earnings distributed in July.
So that actually is kind of a warning sign to us. We have been pretty used to double digit increases. And it was one of those phenomenons because of COVID, sales tax revenues jumped. But this is not double digit anymore.
No, it's not double.
The rate of increase is smaller, closer to five percent, which I think is probably closer to
Inflation.
To to the the typical year over increase with one major exception, and that is when any of our waterfront industries have an expansion, the sales tax on those equipment purchases has a it's a big outlier for what we're used to. And if I remember reading the the statistics for building and planning, there's a a big jump up in permits because I think of, I think it's the 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 new block box plant at I can't remember, West Rock.
West
West Rock. Fiber. And so so that we may see another one more bump up with that when that figure makes it through the sales tax, but
And let's not forget what you what you told us last time too, to remember that during some of these recent past periods, we're collecting sales tax from online sales that yeah.
Not that I like pouring cold water on your good news, but it is good news.
Yeah, it's good news. Well, you've had a you've had a couple of months where the sales tax dispersed was lower than prior year. But so far this year, I mean, I'm also going to look at it year to date and see where we're where we're at. I think we're up year to date and I'll confirm it and send a little report to all of y'all.
And I would imagine that huge apartment complex in Lexington is gonna result in some pretty, pretty good purchases. There's about two hundred units.
Close to that, yeah.
Drive by every day.
Yeah.
There are a whole bunch of units on Old Pacific Highway in Calama.
Well.
And more coming.
It's, it's interesting in Calama, they have expanded their city limits, so I don't know where they were city limits ago. I think those developments are all within the city, but, but I'm not sure.
Oh, different than Lexington, of course. I think you're correct. They're in the city limits. I just look at it. It's a taxpayer. He doesn't really care except. Yeah.
And then um we're continuing to do data entry on the budget um for twenty four and twenty five. And um we opened the budget up last week and so. Uh, various departments have already started doing their data entry of what their requests are. So we're moving along and. With the due date of, I think it's August fourteenth to the budget office to, for us to then begin to put everything together.
Good. Anything else? Thank you very much. Corrections. Morning.
Good morning, Miranda Fox, Director of Corrections. I'll give a brief update on our jail population today. We're at two hundred and thirty four inmates with thirty nine bookings over the weekend. Uh, which isn't quite as busy as we have been, but we even had a, a couple cells open today, just not usual on a Monday morning. And we do have an agenda item on tomorrow, so I wanted to give uh some information on that. It's an amendment to our contract with Summit. Uh, regarding the juvenile meals. It's an increase for, it's, it's a slight increase, about an eight percent increase. We have to update that um amendment yearly because of O S P I requirements, so we submit for reimbursement to O S P I. This is for meals that are served at the juvenile detention center.
A, a, a question about that um. I remember the numbers are fairly low. It's a, but I'm interested in the all in. Cost per meal. So this is just for the, the actual material and then someone else. Does some packaging of it or preparation?
So our contract with Summit covers um all the meal preparation, so menu planning, all of that, all the food costs. As well as three kitchen workers, so three cooks. So.
So it does.
All of that's factored in.
That's, that's the all in cost.
That's all in. We have, we do have a working for the county, a jail kitchen manager. So that, that would be the only cost that's not factored in to these.
And just, just to preview, the, the cost number will be for, for these guys?
This is specifically the juveniles, so the adult meals are cheaper. Uh, two point two two five is what it currently is and it's going up to two point four four eight. This is the last extension on this contract. We'll be going out to bid for both juvenile and adult meals next year. That makes sense. Any questions?
No.
Why is it so cheap?
I'm, I'm sure you're keeping a very good eye on the nutrition content and all that, so I, I, I. I only marvel at uh, so I'll put in a plug comparing that to Meals on Wheels.
Sure. And we are required with the juvenile meals to provide cer- we have to hit certain markers, just like schools, we're, we're, we're doing what the schools have to do. Um, for juvenile meals, they have to be, uh, they have, you know, milk or, you know, certain vegetables.
Do the kids eat it all?
We send it over. You'd have to ask the juvenile detention facility how, how that goes.
I know, speaking.
Yeah, yeah. And um last week I talked about hiring, you know, we're, we're down a, a number of positions. We have received three applications from Larch Mountain uh prison employees. So we're going to fast track those. Part of the benefit to those, they could go to a two week equivalency academy rather than the ten week and they would more than likely be. Uh, easier to train as well, so.
Any idea how your uh pay scale compares to the Larch Mount?
Really, I believe they make more now. Which we used to, uh jails always traditionally paid way more than prisons and now um I, I believe their starting wage is higher than ours. That's all I have unless there are questions.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Miranda.
I T.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Horton, I T Director. We are still continuing our risk assessment with departments. Mike is going around. He is our Deputy Director for the public. And I don't know if you want to give a more detailed update on that or anything like that, but that's been primarily. One of our big projects along with the telecommunications project.
This is uh. With your permission, it's an opportunity. I, I had a pretty uh long discussion with I T regarding. Uh, sort of a very high level approach and. I, because I come from the engineering side of things, it's often easy to forget that. Engineering, uh, software, those are all tools. The real purpose of them is to solve. A problem for people. And so when they're trying to get risk assessment and. I, I had asked them to be very hierarchical. Just tell me what the importance of the data is. And I will use that with other factors. Uh, so by the importance, I, I should, I, I should go back a little in the importance of the data in terms of retention. And then I will try and figure out, I I T have the obligation to figure out. How to do that. So it's like you as a department head or. Superior Court, you should be not burdened at that point in time, at that point in time with the mechanics of, do I do it with a server? Do I do it with the cloud? Do I do it with the? Uh, with a sneaker net or, you know, something like that. So I, I just wanted to be sure you folks were on. Board with that because that's kind of what I've expressed strongly.
Well, and I'm, I'm glad they're taking the time to do with the, the departments and do this. I think it's probably been overdue for a while.
Right, they have to tell us the value of the data.
Right. Yeah.
And it would be improper for us to do it the other way.
Once that's all completed, I'll be, I think we've talked a little bit about having a workshop and just kind of go over all that so we can see it, but yeah.
Well, as long as the fax machines work, I'm okay.
I can tell you a story about that.
Yeah, you got a fax machine buried in your office somewhere.
In addition to that, we're also tuning the retention policy that we um, we provided a draft to Commissioner Mortensen. And I'm working with the Public Records gal in your office to kind of dial in the retention side of things from a Public Records Act perspective along with. Our attorney's office.
Good.
So we have meetings with them this week to go over those details.
I, I think we're on a September thirtieth deadline. Is that right?
I was hoping to have it the first part of August, but the feedback I've given, been given, um, it's gonna have to push that out further.
I think it was July thirty first was.
I don't know, but it's uh, i- it does require the interaction that they're doing and uh, uh, this is one of the things where. It's too important to. It's done when it's done.
But we're actively working on it. It's one of our um managerial priorities. And another matter that I reported on last week was we were having some cooling issues in our admin building. Server room um facilities has looked into it and they're determining that. Work needs to be done on that, so we're discussing who budget, who needs to budget for that and that may need to be an I T budget cost. So I'm working with facilities and the budget office to iron that out. It's not something that we used to budget for in the I T budget, so. Questions or concerns on that?
I um. Yeah, I, it's. That room wasn't ever built with the idea that the machinery would be in it, so I'm scratching my head thinking. And I haven't really looked at it carefully. Other huge. Bunch of cables that are coming in from throughout the building and so trying to move things is. A little bit, it's better to put in A C there in some way than it is to. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I share your same thought. Or in not an ideal room trying to make it work. Yeah.
If only we had a handle on H X as they do in Idaho. Isn't that right here?
Well, at least in my house now.
Not so much.
I got. Anything else, Kay?
Um, nope. That was kind of hard.
There is. Something else you can tell us maybe? Uh, nine one one and the switch over and all that, that's. As we speak?
Today.
Yeah, they've been moving staff over there.
Today's the day. Yeah, okay.
So I know that they've been doing some updates to their system where there was like minor outages last week just to get themselves ready. And then I'm of the understanding that they actually had already been moving dispatchers to their new facility, so.
And your group is gonna. Move them from the basement of the H O J to somewhere else in the H O J?
They've already established a footprint behind records and so they have a server room plus. Dispatch workstations and so the current plan. And Mike can probably attest to this because he recently talked to John Diamond and Don Turntime. The plan is to get fully operational in their ocean beach location and then once that's completely stood up, they're gonna start. Making sure that they're, they're gonna start standing up their backup H O J facility, which is behind records. And then they'll vacate the admin backup facility in this building.
Where, where is their backup here today?
It's in the I T space. We have one.
Up here.
We have one office and it's occupied in there.
When was the last time it was used?
That's a great question.
So it probably doesn't work if you follow engineering principles.
Well, I remember when we built the, the. Installed the generator out in the plaza for, for that backup. And that was.
Always, wa- was that the impetus? Wow, I didn't know that. That's a, that's a rather big generator.
That's a big generator. And uh. That doesn't go with them.
No.
Anything else?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I. I lo- I lo- I like uh some of the things you're reaching out to the department, so thank you for that.
So, so last week I did, did represent the county at the Board of Directors meeting for nine one one and they were. As ecstatic as they ever get about the fact that. Today was the day to shift over. They had a series of open houses last week. Introducing the new facility to s- staff and family and then user agencies and the public, so. They're, they're pretty excited. It's a nice that when we have a meeting there, so.
Yeah.
That transition is well underway.
So. Nice facility. It's come with a lot of. Issues getting to the, where they're at, but it's there. Any other miscellaneous?
Actually, uh, yeah, I was gonna ask you more than one questions, but.
Oh.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I see no hands. We'll adjourn this one and we have another meeting coming up at eleven. Oh, I'm sorry, executive session. My fault, Jessica. How much time? Five minutes? Okay, we'll take care of that. Thank you for reminding me. Hey, we're back from executive session. No decisions were made. Jessica.
Hello, um, I would like to make the request to. Reclassify the finance manager position into a finance director position. At salary grade six oh five, starting at step one.
That would be effective. July first or right now?
Um, effective August first.
August first.
Uh, yes. I believe so.
Is your is your microphone on?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the. Motion request from HR that is to move the finance manager to the position of. Director of Finance.
Okay. Any discussion on it? I don't see the. Hands. And we call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Also, aye. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, I see no hands, no other business. We will adjourn this one. We'll be back at eleven with the. Another meeting. Thank you. Good morning. Welcome to the eleven o'clock business meeting with Public Services. Start the IC Building and Planning is ready to go.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tracy Jackson, Building and Planning. Um, I just wanted to touch base on our staffing levels. We, um. The last two are recent two hires are permit specialists. We're on board last Monday. And on Wednesday, our final planner is starting. So we will be fully staffed on Wednesday. So we're very excited. It's a long time coming. So. We're super excited. And I'm gonna turn it over to Mike Wilson and Wayne Nelson. Um, to go over the monthly reports and just let the board know kind of where we're at and permitting levels and then we'll take. Do any miscellaneous.
Good morning, Mike Wilson, Building and Planning. Uh, yeah, it's a good thing we're up to staff because we've been pretty busy and. Uh, the numbers reflect that. It's just slightly down a bit from last year. For instance, the. New residential starts permits issued. Uh, about six percent down this time last year, but the commercial. Uh, development is increased. Huge eighty percent up. And that's.
Did you say eight or eighty?
Eighty percent.
Eighty?
Eighty percent year to date from last year and which isn't really surprising simply because. Commercial industrial work tends to forecast out quite a bit into the future and they're not going to. You know, change their. Process uh, in the short term. So. It's it's good to hear and you know, you're aware of some of the projects. Port of Calama, uh, West Rock, so on. We have a lot of little in betweens, um, something like. Twenty three. Commercial applications just in the month of June. Uh, many have been issued. Beaver Bay out. The reservoirs, uh. Campground improvements. So a lot of work that was in process and forecasted is now coming into play. So quite a bit of that going on. And interestingly.
Question?
Pardon me?
Uh, eighty percent in terms of dollars?
A number of permits.
Number of permits?
A number of permits and eighty eighty percent increase. And I said the all the way, you know, across the board from. Uh, cell tower, cell tower construction modifications to the the larger projects such as the ports and. And everything in between. So.
And just to be sure, uh, tract homes are not included in this.
No, no, this though, the single family dwellings are about six percent down from this time last.
No, I'm I'm just trying to define. I didn't want to. Want to come up ahead of you. I want to be sure I have a good firm grip on what is commercial.
Oh, yeah, it does not include single family dwellings.
Okay, thank you.
Or. Two family dwellings for that matter. Uh, that commercial is that which is administered through the International Building Code. As compared to one and two family dwellings, which are under the residential code.
Would it? Would it be possible for? You to. Show us the impact. That that new apartment complex in Lexington has had in terms of. Revenue and, you know, increased property taxes and all those, all those kind of factors because.
Well, that may be something that the assessor could better um, address that you're the one you're speaking of is fifteen buildings plus a cub house. Hundred ninety eight units. I believe currently they have temporary. Hundred and ninety-eight units. I believe currently they have temporary occupancy on five of the buildings. Um, and swimming pool. And their target is to have full occupancy by the end of October.
Okay.
Uh, we've been issuing temporary occupancies based upon that target date. I had a conversation with them last week because we're trying to reconcile things. You know, make certain the addressing is correct and so forth for emergency response because they've been making some changes during the process as well. Um, my understanding is that occupancy has not been a challenge for them. Um, no sooner than they get them done than they get them filled. So uh, it's been a great, you know, boon for the community. Good location.
I mean, all.
Good resources.
All the growth that's happened in Lexington.
Hmm.
In the last, you know, ten fifteen years, I think it's probably directly attributed to the bridge.
Oh, yeah.
That has made a huge difference and they get making it more convenient for Clark County commuters, basically.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, interesting though, to which interestingly, we mentioned also in the B fact meeting.
Before you go there.
But.
Have another question. Um, oh, the the uh. We struggle here trying to define the uh mix of commercial we like. Or should shoot for. So uh, is there a way you can? Uh, maybe give us a one-time shot at these numbers. Uh, how? How many are for tourism? How many are for uh, uh, high tech? How many are for uh? Uh, construction or? Whatever it might be. Because I know, for example, what's on my mind is that I would desperately like this county to partake in. High tech at some point, but we seem not to do that very well. And I think Chris. Park was designed kind of for be one of a place where an incubation of these kinds of. Companies could start. So I'd just like to know what the nature of the business is.
I could provide you the breakdown if that's what you'd like. I mean, I don't have it in front of me, but yeah.
Right, a simple email would be fine, right?
That would that would be good to know what the trends are.
Yeah. Well, current um currently the port projects, well, Port of Clama, um, another new vanilla, you know. Like building that they will receive tenants. Um. Very similar to the ones that are there now. And of course, you know, well, West Rock. Uh, West Rock is also making improvements on ancillary structures in support of all their activities. Uh, their truck loadout facilities, their um electrical control rooms. Uh, these are all.
Email.
Pardon me?
Email.
Pardon me?
Email it, please.
Oh, yeah, certainly I can do that. Um, so yeah, I can put together a list and, you know, the diversity of product projects, you know, the nature of what we're receiving. Also, a lot of uh cell tower co-locations, a lot of that going on, so. Anyway, yeah, I can put together that. And uh, as I said, what we brought together in the B pack meeting as well was the. Significant increase in ADUs. Um, you know, since the ordinance was written such that it allowed some flexibility there. Um, that's doubled, you know, since last year. So uh, a lot of people making good use of that.
And yet the cottage subdivision hasn't gone anywhere, right? There's they've not broken ground.
There's, you know, Wayne may be able to address that. It's not yet hit the ground as far as building permits concerned.
So you began this last topic with the BPAC. Uh, I I missed the tie-in between ADUs and BPAC.
Yeah, it's as you know, at our monthly BPAC meeting, um, we present, you know, what's the state of? Business activity and so forth, you know, the number of permits issued and so forth. And it was at that time that was presented that, you know, that it was noticed that uh. Uh, ADU applications had doubled since last year. Uh, which is obviously directly related to number one. The public awareness that they can do such a thing and of course, the advantage of doing such a thing. So.
Okay.
So that means next month you'll be able to report that homelessness is no longer a problem, right?
But I think you made at one point in time, you guys made some. Adjustment on how you interpreted this, the use of septic systems on that too. I I mean, Travis had talked about getting permitted for. One time upfront, if it was big enough, then you could add it ADU to it. I think some of that might have helped a little bit to just.
Yeah, exactly. Um. Right, building one to as Tracy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I'll pass it over to Wayne.
Thank you, Wayne Nelson. Uh, so Mike largely captured the the activity of the department as a whole. Um, in general, the planning numbers generally mirror reflect what we're also seeing in building. The exception to that is in the planning clearances and that's the precursor review. Um, and they can be independent of a building permit application. They're also valid for five years. And so I think we'll see those uh hit a cycle. We'll we'll have a wave of them. And then they'll be valid for a period of time and then we'll see a new wave. And so we're. We're substantially down in planning clearance numbers. However, we're also reviewing them at a at a much quicker rate in general. Um, we're also hitting around twenty-five percent in total of over the counter reviews. So in those instances where they don't necessarily trigger a critical areas review or or additional review, we can issue those over the counter. So. The overall timeframe of those coming in is quicker in addition to the number of over the counters we're reissuing. Um. Mike touched on the ADUs, so that's that's been pretty noticeable of the uptick in that. And then uh. The other thing, and this is just more commentary than anything, is we're also seeing uh. Additional or new comments from both DOE and Fish and Wildlife, particularly with respect to our SEPA notices. And so they're emphasizing their their state guidelines versus mandates of what they would like to. See projects conditioned with. And so we're we've been responding to those in kind, but just to. Bring that to the board's attention.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I've got um. I'm feeling rather slow today. No laughing. Could you start again and try and tie it into an overall inference we might draw from what you're saying? So twenty-eight percent was the number you said?
So the I didn't give a percent. Oh, the I'm sorry. So twenty-five percent roughly a quarter of the planning clearance applications. And so the planning clearance can come in as an independent application or it can be associated with a specific project.
Yes, okay, so twenty-five percent of what number ties to what?
So we are year to date on planning clearances. We're at two eighty for the month of June. We're at forty-four. So roughly ten, ten or twelve for the on a month, we would be able to do over the counter.
Okay, so uh. Do I infer that in instances that we didn't have before, I think? That results for some instances are now over the counter, so uh. That translates into a happy customer, I assume.
Exactly.
That means I walk in there with a plan and somebody's gonna look at it right then and there. And by the hour is up, I have the approval in my hand.
That's exactly right.
Okay, thank you. And then what was it you said after that? Or actually, I should say, what do you attribute that change to? Because I don't think we used to have that.
Correct. So uh, the the biggest change is staff uh training and familiarity where the staff we have on board right now, they've they're gaining experience every day. Um, we're doing a lot of cross-training, uh, a lot of in-house uh informational meetings, et cetera. And so they've uh, we're pretty pleased. They've really come a long ways. And so they're able to. Recognize the red flags and the green flags. And when they can make that determination, we've we've also afforded them the discretion to do that.
Okay, I, the reason I stopped you is the public needs to know. And going too quick on these things doesn't translate into something that the public can.
Okay.
Certainly. So what was the next item that's it?
So that that was it. Uh, also echoed the uh increase in the number of ADUs. That's been a very uh. I'll say favorable as well as popular permit. So we're we're seeing that. Um, and when we're talking about doubling the numbers, we're. Um. Last year to date, we're at twelve. This year to date, we're at twenty-seven. So um, you know, they're not huge numbers overall, but. Um, as more and more people are familiar with that option being out there, there's definitely uh partaking in that opportunity.
Although it's not information required that you get from the customer, I'm curious, do you have a notion whether those ADUs are for? Additional income or for mom and dad are moving in kind of thing?
It's it's been my experience that most of them that we're seeing are some sort of personal relationship, whether friend, family, uh. Parents, children, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. Good.
So that's all we had. We just wanted to bring numbers forward to the board and let you know where we were. Do you have any questions for us?
Thank you.
Yeah, it's uh, probably for you, Tracy, we. We do get the spreadsheets.
Hmm.
But we're left to try to decide what what might be inferred from those numbers. If you could throw in a paragraph or two or three, depending on what it is that you notice this and the implication is that.
Okay, they come from a different staff member, but I will gladly intercept them and do that before we send them up. Absolutely.
Makes sense to you folks.
We also just like to come up and talk to you about them too, because it kind of gives you guys a flavor of what's going on out there.
I'm not saying in lieu of.
Right, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Public Works. Oh, I I did. Sorry, I had uh the. SEPA policy, we were trying to get that the time to change on that. Remember, it was only two weeks for people to respond to certain. Stuff.
So we will have uh proposed uh ordinance amendments to you. Next month that that have been through the planning commission. Um, I would have to go back and look and see exactly what those recommendations are, but. Yes, we are. We have uh looked at noticing requirements in addition to the to timelines. Uh, the. Public posting requirements with the size of sign, the location of signs, the uh, the radius of the adjacent neighbors from three hundred feet to five hundred feet. So we're expanding that radius. We're making more visible signs and we're extending the uh.
Okay, thank you.
Dates.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, Susan and Gina's County Engineer. I bring glad tidings today. Uh, we worked last. Uh, legislative session to with our state representatives to get some additional funding for the Rock Creek Culvert. And last week I received via email the confirmation of which department it is coming from and uh the amounts. So we are receiving two million dollars through Commerce in the state budget to work on our Rock Creek Culvert. Final project.
Now, is this the project Josh Weiss worked on for us?
Yes, um, we were very thankful for that.
Fairly decent return on our investment.
Yeah, very good return on our investment. So next week they're holding the uh funding seminar on uh starting to run the paperwork. So we'll get the paperwork running through. I had, uh, as you remember, you asked me a few weeks ago what the design status was. I knew when we were working on this, I put the consultant kind of on a halt. Um, because I didn't know if it was coming through Commerce or WashDOT because their requirements are different. So now that I know that I can start what getting that project up and running and we'll get this paper, uh, this uh funding in place.
And the total estimate was four, is it four million?
It was four million. Um, and that was including the temporary bridge. So. Uh, we're guessing that the price has gone up some and that'll be one of the things I asked the consultant to do uh right away because. We'll use this money and then uh whatever it's running over, we can estimate to use the ARPA funds that we have and then return the rest.
Were you, were you counting on this, the the these? One point nine five?
Uh, I was not counting on this money. We were moving forward and we were hoping for this money because I know you guys were hoping to get some of that ARPA money back.
And while not, I don't want to sound uh um ungrateful at all. Uh, the, but I had. I questioned the administration has nothing to do with the execution of the project, right? They're gonna take fifty thousand bucks. To do the paperwork of some kind, but has nothing to do with how you do the job.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Think that falls under the golden rule?
Yeah. So thank you Commissioner for the information to help us move forward with the uh consultant on that.
So I I mentioned Josh Weiss. And that's uh kind of uh. Interesting because Josh also works for the local cities. Who several years ago went to legislature to try to get lodging tax monies back. And we were able to to prevent that from happening. And now we hired the opponent, so he's on our side now, right?
That's correct.
Until the check stops.
So uh. Josh is in our employee in some way as a consultant.
He he works for Honeywell, I think is the consultant firm.
Correct.
Right. He had been, I think when you first joined the commission, I think he was still on staff at at WAC. And then he went private.
Okay, and so for this particular project, uh, you included at your recommendation involving Josh.
Right.
Correct. We reached out to Josh, had a couple of meetings with Josh and his assistant Hannah. And uh signed a small contract for them to move forward pushing this through Olympia. Uh, a fairly small contract for the amount of it was small enough that I was actually able to sign it in-house without having to come to you guys. And then I actually get a couple of million dollars out of it, so. Yeah.
There's one good payback.
Yeah, great payback. So once again, thank you Commissioner Weber. Uh, nine-one-one lease termination notice. We got notice uh that they're now moving out of HOJ and into their new building. It sounds like a per the letter was July twenty-fourth was their. Opening day, which is today. So.
Yeah.
If you guys got confirmation of that at all, if they're actually out of the new center or not. So they had to, there was a two-month notice for us. So actually they're paying rent through September thirtieth of this year. Uh, they reached out to us asking maybe for a new lease for a smaller uh square footage area somewhere in the HOJ. So we'll be working with uh Mr. Diamond with that. Um, trying to get a new lease together for a smaller space. I don't exactly. What that will be be needed for, but I'll give the details to you guys. I'm sorry, I meet with Mr. Diamond, the executive director of nine-one-one, as you guys probably know.
Has there been any discussion at all about? Uh, co-locating uh emergency management over at the nine-one-one center? They're they're adjacent now. That seemed to make sense when we have incidents, but uh.
I did ask that question to Larry a couple of weeks ago, uh, during a meeting uh on a different subject. And his response was no, that I don't think they have space even at nine-one-one now for all of them. So he's gonna, the DEM is gonna remain in the basement of HOJ.
Space wise, uh, remind me how much space is in the nine-one-one building? It's like. More than twice the size of what they have now.
I can't help you there. I I've no, I have not toured the new nine-one-one center, so I don't know the square.
Yeah, I I used to remember, right? If I divide thirteen million by six hundred and fifty, maybe I'd come close, but uh. Twenty thousand square feet? No, that can't be.
Well, they continue to have issues with their contractor, though. Um, and that's been a huge.
I think that you you're probably familiar with.
It's been a. If anything could go wrong, it went wrong with that, that contract and.
Well, yeah, it's actually a lot of it's gone to the bonding company.
Really?
And they're the ones making the decisions, yeah.
Not good. So we have a lot of public works and it's just middle of construction season for us. Lot of chip seal, striping will begin. Middle of August. An overlay is done, so um, yeah, it's just been normal. That's why our public works list is fairly small and mainly working on. Other items, what you see on there is the funding and also even working on the different. other items. What you see on there is the funding and also even working on the different leases around the county since it's under public works.
So, so last week I went, we went to a, a retirement reception at the boathouse. Which meant we got reminded about how horrible the parking lot is to get there. And you, we've talked about that before. There was some landscaping issues and then I think we were on track for some kind of overlay or
We're still on lay, overlay for, on track for overlay. We're looking at September. We are going out hopefully this week, actually tomorrow, we should, we have the scope of work for the, the arborist for the trees cut back and removal. That's, the scope of work was presented today at the supervisor meeting. They, they gave some suggestions tomorrow. We get that online for hopefully a couple of weeks only. Because we're hoping to trim the trees back in the month of August. So, and get everything cut back we need to and remove the trees that need to be removed before we grind and overlay, which we're looking at doing while the weather's still good in September. And once again, that'll be just for the south parking lot and the east parking lot on the riverside and HHS. We're looking at doing the north parking lot in 2024. Or just for phase wise, we're going to run out of time this year to do all of that. Because we've kind of come behind also and striped those parking lots when said and done.
Going back to 911, I, I just pulled the calculator out and it is 20,000 square feet. So that's, that's at least twice what's there for combined 911 and DEM. That may be an irrelevant point, but if we were to move DEM there, we would be paying them rent then, right?
Probably so, I would guess. It'd be a contract in place, yes.
Right. And that wouldn't necessarily make sense to me if we have the space here, right?
It, it is, it's always struck me as being a little ironic. One of the big impetuses for moving 911 is to get out of the basement because it's under the because of the, the water level of the river. But we keep emergency management there still. So, so which, which reason is more valid, you know, is more valid?
Well, it's also, you keep getting me going. I'm, it's a lot of things weren't done right.
When you were at the boathouse, could you tell any of the changes when you pulled up or inside?
Oh, yeah. Nice decorations and painting and
The flooring.
Yeah, the flooring, it still sags every time I walk on it, but it's still good. I'm only kidding, of course. You open yourself up for commentary, but
Exactly what I was doing. Parks, this quick update on gun range. Tomorrow we're chip sealing the driveway in the back parking lot. That's through the RCO grant. For the trap house, that's part of that project. We're also paying the clubhouse. We're doing that in-house with summer help. So they pressure washed last week and hoping next week with good weather that will paint that structure. Just a quick update on the trap houses themselves. Still working with the contractor to get those built along with the trap pad, shooting pads. Actually meaning the, their, a new operations manager on top of the project, in charge of the project tomorrow. He's flying in from San Diego tonight. We've had some issues with this company, just with their subcontractors. So working through those issues and still hoping to get built in the next two, three weeks. Get that done before the fall school session comes around because they get a lot of school shoes scheduled out there. So that's the plan of attack. Unfortunately, it's taking a little bit longer than we anticipated with the, the company, but had a really good conversation on the phone this morning. So hopefully we're find a, a new subcontractor to work with through this company and make some progress out there. Last week was a challenging week, so hopefully we're past that.
And can you give us an update on where we are at the management change? We had heard that the club was looking for a change.
Yeah, their, their agreement with the county, Cal's game and anglers runs through 2025. There's been some talk and some are meetings about maybe wanting to get out of that a little earlier, as I was talking about.
So this is Rick's problem. Okay.
Plus it's his district. So there's been some talk about maybe drafting agreements to have them some out clauses. They're, they're aging out, as you know, at that well, all volunteer based at the game, game and anglers at the gun range. There is a, a sublease agreement between the sheriff's office and the game and anglers. That's a review right now, actually was sent to the game and anglers this weekend. So I expect that to go back and forth. It might actually come to you guys after all reviews done through the sheriff's office since they started this process. Because our deed of sublease, since the game and anglers leased the grounds, the sheriff's office has 100 yard range. They're looking for a sublease off the, the regular lease. So I expect to see that fairly soon in a final form.
Yeah, we, we've talked a little bit about the public's confusion and concern. So when that's all done, we really should put out a an informative piece because the, the public thinks that the law enforcement people are trying to kick out the public. And that kind of stuff.
Some, some people have that impression.
Yeah, certainly not the case. They have their own range there and the public range is still open. Six days a week is closed on Mondays and then the trap range will now have three shooting pads. So it's actually expanding out there. They're doing a few more things on the archery range. So game and anglers wants to expand what they're doing. But like I said, they're aging out. So sooner or later we'll have to make a decision of what, how to move forward. I would guess early next year in 2024, late, late spring, early summer, we'd have to go out to bid or, or not bid, the RFQ. For maybe RFP, for proposals of how to run the gun range or it's gonna be a concessionaire, a third party, how that look with a government contract with the private sector. So it'll be challenging because there's, you know, there's not a lot, a lot of shooters out there for someone to run a business. Being volunteers based is great, but if they're trying to run salaries and keep it open that way, it's gonna be really challenging. So we'll have to look at how it looks money wise and how we, you know, still get money for maintenance and lead abatement and all that fun stuff. Once we, game and anglers is no longer on site.
So we've had some success with a camp host at Gardner Park. Is, is this an opportunity where that might also make sense to have the a range host be a resident out there?
I didn't think about it that way. That, that certainly could be the case. Yeah, we pay a small stipend for the camp host out at Harry Gardner Park. Mainly for internet and, and phone access out there since it's spotty and limited. And they, they help, you know, check in people and check restrooms and, you know, kick out people who shouldn't be there. And, and so it, it works out really well for our, our park team to have a camp host there. So that might be something we look at also at the gun range as an option.
As long as we're there, any update on Jim's project for LT1?
Uh, actually he's made the request, I think in the next week or two with Savannah to come to you guys and give you a full update. So we'll probably ask Kelly if we can get it on a Tuesday or Wednesday agenda, either next week or the week after.
What we've discovered with the collaborative meetings is a very strong interest on the part of the federal agencies that we operate under existing permits rather than having to go out and get all new permitting. And it's kind of like, you know, bundling all the different projects together so that you know, there, there are a number of permits that have already been issued. And anything that fits with the purpose of those permits would avoid this long, very costly permitting process with the federal government. So that was, and, and Jim's project is one of those that would, that would tail in on, on an existing permit. So
It's great news.
It's, that's, yeah, that was good news to hear. That was something believe it or not, the core is encouraging. So.
And there's some of us who would just build it and show that it's a positive asset. So as for forgiveness later. The Rick's gonna be gone. Maybe you can coordinate when he's here before you do that.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, it needs to be to all three commissioners. I believe that, yeah.
Yeah. Well, at my age, you can't be sure I'll be here.
We'll check vacation calendars out for all three of you.
So I, I am curious as to where we are on the Kellyman Park. The Kellyman River Park. Last we heard, I think there was a restroom in the works, but we've not had any kind of grand opening or any, any, anything like that.
Yeah.
Taking a grand opening of a toilet, okay.
We'll make sure Alyssa, we'll ask her to come next Monday and give you update on, on that project, any other projects at the, at the parks. I know they are finishing up a project at Riverside also for the Frisbee Gulf.
Right.
They had the baskets out. I think they're also now working on the throwing pads. We're also, next week we're chip sealing the riverside parking lot. Recycling center, along with three other recycling center parking lots. So it'll be a little improvement out there. That was one that hit potholes a lot. Along with the Rose Valley one that will be chip sealing. So, yeah, I'll, I'll make sure she's here on Monday and give you a report.
The Parks is also putting together their five-year plan. And that needs to be approved by the board. So I probably pretty close to completing that. I know at the last park board meeting, it was really remarkable because I took the original plan and I made a bunch of changes which would typically amount to taking out a lot of language. And then that was kind of approved by Alyssa and she submitted it to the government to the RCO people. They looked at that and said, yeah, but this section here is superfluous. Take it out.
So we have some other documents you can do that too also. We have some other documents you can do that too also.
So last week proved to be a bit problematic for building and facilities because of the heat and shut down or
Only HOJ.
Close to shutting, shutting down HOJ and, and give us an update on that, where we are.
Yeah, I actually asked ma, maintenance to give you a full report next Monday with all the projects going on from JL HVAC, Museum HVAC and what they're doing at the annex. But yeah, last week they had some issues with a valve in HOJ that wasn't circulating the cold water to the facility. That's the only really way to keep that facility cold. And once they got somebody on site, I believe it was Wednesday to, to look at and fix it, the, the temperatures dropped pretty quickly, at least in the, in the, not maybe in the office itself or the building itself, because it takes such a long time to come down. But actually where it was circulating, it dropped, that water temperature dropped 20 degrees with like a half hour. So it's really just one valve. The problem is according to staff, there's like a hundred of these valves in that facility. So yeah, one went bad and stopped the process of the water circulating, but not saying next week one of the other 99 valves won't do the same thing. So just because we fixed one doesn't mean that the system's fixed. So
As long as you keep, keep track of the name of the employee that fixed it, he's the expert now, right?
Yeah, it was, it was actually a third party, I believe it was Southwest Controls actually found the valve. Actually, I think after they're, they're only a few minutes, they were able to track it down fairly quickly. It's just about getting that person off a different job site to our site. Yeah, I can go on and on about that facility, but I'll stop.
How much elbow grease was required when it was hardly anything?
Hardly any.
Yeah, see that, that, that good, but it bothers me also that it's not rocket science and we really should not have gone through that. So somehow the staff has to get itself up to speed to understand what it is that they have in.
Be able to find that as a team rather than a third party.
And in terms of 99 valves, I, I don't that doesn't sound right to me. There may be 99 valves, like in my house, there is a valve for the sink in the bathroom and so forth. But the real valve that counts is out in the street. So I'm just saying, because what, when, what that valve shut down, maybe it's such a lousy system that any valve takes down the whole system, but I doubt it.
I'll research that a little bit more.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Sounds like it was a recirculation issue and if one valve shut down, that I, I heard this on a two minute phone call, so I, I probably butcher it. But then the water to be able to circulate through the rest of the system so it kind of holds itself.
Yeah, but that tells you almost immediately where the problem.
Problem is, yeah. As long as they have pressure points where we'll be able to see this, if, where circulation is happening, where circulation is not happening, to find that valve, correct.
I would have Susan grab that broken bolt in her office, do a few curls as she walks over and says, is there a problem here?
We apologize HOJ. I mean, that's, that, that stretch is already hard enough to keep cool, even if things are running properly. Let alone a day, and of course it breaks down during the 90 degree days of that heat, that building just blewed up. So I, yeah, and even if I say, you know, on good days, they, they usually start their day out maybe at 75 degrees. Unlike this facility here, which usually starts its day out at 65 degrees. So.
I had another question on facility, for, for facilities and I, I'm getting a number of emails from agencies talking about EV plugins. And I don't think the county has any. But we've got 600 employees and and grant money is available to kind of install things is is anybody working on a kind of a plan to say, we're gonna try to provide what 10% or 5%? Whatever the standard is supposed to be for appropriate EV plugins.
We've talked about internally, especially on public works side about when we were working on that south parking lot for HOJ, if that was the timing to look at EVs plugins. I know you guys had this discussion maybe a month ago in, on a Tuesday meeting about grant possibilities for EVs and Cougar and believe Toodle area that
That didn't go anywhere.
Move forward. So as they, we, we kind of settled off right now, maybe we'll put the effort in a looking at county agencies if, if we're not gonna go after those grant programs. So I guess leave it up to you three. If you guys want us to move forward, find some EV sites or in our parking lots here around this facility or HOJ or HHS or others, we certainly can look into that. But if, if that's something, a program you guys don't want to go after, we're not gonna spend a lot of time on it.
Typically we don't do much in the way of running after grants, but being in the state of Washington, those mandates are gonna come down to us sooner or later. And it's kind of like, if the money's available now, is it prudent to make the investment? And it's, it's, I don't think a lot of our employees have like, like rich or hybrids, but it's happening. I mean, there are some, so.
But I think about that, my initial reaction is not so positive, but.
I just want us to be open minded so that we don't get stuck with a mandate without the funding. Because we did take advantage of it when the grants were available. But yeah, I mean, I, you know, we're, we're generally pretty reluctant to just run after the grants, but.
See, I, I look at that, the significant change would be for employees that are in and around here. E-bicycles. But doesn't work too nicely when it's pouring rain. Anything else?
That's it from us. Unless you have any more miscellaneous items for us.
I don't believe so. No, I might ask you, uh, old, old 99 is a county road, right?
Part of it.
And down by just north of the Shell Station which is by Todd Road, there's a section there, a beautiful pavement, brand new pavement. And I, just curious as to I don't remember that being a particularly bad spot.
I don't remember that being a particularly bad spot.
I'm going to claim ignorance. I know somewhere uh in that areas where it transitions into the city because that facility that's going into. To just to the north of the gas station, the approach is in the county, but the facility is in the city. So somewhere in that area is where it transitions. So I don't know it off the top of my head because I don't drive that area.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure this has to be county be, uh but but in any event, I I just uh. Just both a sense of appreciation and a and a sense of trying to figure out whatever the underlying algorithm is, it says. This uh maybe. Hundred yard piece of the road got fixed beautifully and. Just curious. And uh a lot of that trash that I mentioned just south of that. Was cleaned up. Was not, not, not a great job, but it was, a lot of it was gone. It's still, I I can, if I had a bag with me, I could fill that bag up. Barely closely, you know.
They said most, they said most of that trash they thought was blowing over from the rebel truck stop. Is that what that you think it was? Or was actually somebody that dumped?
Oh, no, it was, yeah, it was.
Maybe they went to the wrong area because what they reported back was they, there was a lot of wrappers and stuff that looked like it came from the. The Shell Station blew across the street. So maybe they need to go further down the street one way.
There was some of that, but this this really looked like someone on the way to the dump had their their big old bag broke open and. They said, oh, well, and kept on driving.
We'll we'll take another gander.
Yeah, I, well, it's. It's noticeable but not disgusting like it was was before. And let's see, anything else? I'm good.
How's the budgeting on your fuel pricing?
Yeah, this is Sean about that. He. Challenging. Um. You know, we have surcharges in some of our contracts, including waste control or waste connections going to landfill. So I think I believe over three something, we get surcharged on. So that that's, that's pretty good hit to us at the landfill. Um but yeah, we, it's 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 up, that's for sure. And we still, most of our, all our equipment is diesel. So and we we run a. Fair amount of hours. So it's taking a hit into our budget. And so in the next two years, we're gonna plan. Uh for these prices, if not a little bit higher in our in our twenty through four, twenty five budget. And oil prices, oil prices are way up too for our chip seal.
Yeah.
And overlay, yeah. We didn't get quite the mileage you usually get for the same, not the bang for the buck in the overlay projects.
Yeah, you're the, the public workshop is on Cloverdale on the east side.
Yes, correct.
It's a pretty big. Fenced in area, right?
Yeah, pretty good lot. We have a fuel pri- we have, we have fuel tanks there, diesel and uh gas unleaded. That's our south county reserve and Castrock has our north county reserve in case there's an emergency. We we run it, but. We make sure we have a lot of gallons in place in case there's an emergency in place.
Is there much activity out of there? I- i- is anybody there eight to five kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah. Monday through Thursday this time of year.
You all might be wondering what the hell I'm thinking about, right? Uh back in the old days, bicycle clubs had local. Local time trials, which simply means you would sign up and you would go a distance and try to improve your time or be the best time. And uh uh remember when we had around the Monticello thing and then they put in the bumps? Because of the way the pavement was, I was afraid in that criterion that somebody would get hurt because the they they had little rails and or. And uh that can be dangerous and be li- liability. Obvious liability, extra liability for the county, but a time trial isn't every, every minute you go off. And they time you and you come back and yeah, usually there's a prize at the end that amounts to the. Tube of cement or something. Um but it would be uh pretty reasonable to do a time trial from that point. To the end of Cloverdale and back. So. Just in case it ever comes up that we need to do something in parks and. Rack in combination with the bicycle club.
That's true.
The end of Cloverdale is. Right at the uh. End of the bus, the the bike trail. The creek.
Well, actually that's.
Where the creek goes under the the freeway.
Right, it's actually not the end of the bike trail because the bike trail deviated up Green Mountain.
Yeah.
Which effectively ends it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, gentlemen?
I don't think so.
Okay, we will uh adjourn this meeting. Thank you.